Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Being 6:30, we'll call to order the Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, being of Westminster Select Board. Any adjustments to the agenda? I have one adjustment. I would like to move Chuck Highway Formans Report to just under Communications and Public Comments, so he can leave town, go visit his mother as soon as he can. If anybody has any objections to that. Right? Any other adjustments at this time? Right, moving on, acceptance of minutes, July 27th, 2022. I'll move the, we approve the minutes. We'll have a second?
I'll second.
Want some of the made and seconded to approve the minutes of Wednesday, July 27th, 2022. Any discussion? Hold up in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Supposed? Yes. Communications and Public Comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to the adjustment of Highway Formans Report.
Okay, September 5th, School Street, Heights Row Air Section. School Street will remain open, Heights Row will close for approximately two weeks. Open for last fall, they will place that culvert, but it is a FEMA job. That is one of two of our projects that we still have open. So as soon as that's done, we can take care of that, close that out. Monday was a site visit for Pickery Road, which is the USDA grant. September 13th is closing the bids. September 14th at the meeting, they'll be able to open them or award them, rather, 13th will open.
What, wait, I'm sorry. Can you just tell me the dates again? Site visit on Pickery Road?
On Pickery Road, the site visit was Monday.
This last Sunday?
Yep. 22nd.
Thank you. And then 9/14, was there another date that I missed?
Yep, September 13th.
Yeah.
The bids will be in.
Bidding, bidding, bidding.
Okay, thank you.
14th, the meeting we can discuss.
And then 14th?
Discussing awards.
The board will discuss an award? Thank you.
Yep. The bridge deck on South Valley Row was, we had three estimates on it. Only one contractor got back to us, and it came back at $100,000. I will be soliciting ARPA funds to do that. It's a wood deck bridge now with an I-beam understructure. The I-beams all rotted, it was used when it was put in. So the proposal is to do a precast bridge deck, because the footings are still good, so they can set it right on the existing, and shall watch for long term. Brian Harlow took the job to install the culvert on Windmill South, which is a Better Roads grant, and he'll do that as soon as it lands. The number five bridge, of course, you guys know about that. It's the latest spring. While they figure out what they're going to do with steel and come up with the designs, get it ready. Bumper ramps and aid will be 100% done next week. They hydro seeded today. Next week they'll gravel it, and that'll be put together.
Back up to 121 Bridge. We went to Rock and Hand Meeting last night. Chuck and I did. It was essentially a mirror image of what went on here a month ago. No other information, there was nothing else that was given at that time.
The only problem we had when they left wasn't official, but they had, those two private had to come to agreement.
They still, they...
So there's no agreement that we can send out to say it's going to start?
Nope. They were meeting today with Mark, with the contractor, with like preliminary plans, but there's still nothing, there's nothing set in stone. There's nothing moved beyond where we were.
So the only information is our best guess is we'll start this spring. Nothing's going to start now in spring.
Nothing's going to start between now and minimum of next March, and that's dependent on still contractor availability, steel availability, and that type of thing.
In design.
In design. So all those signs that Mike put up are going to be just stayed covered and leave them there?
Yep. They also, last night, he kicked it back to eight months from 12 to 16, so we'll steal that.
Yep.
That's the state.
I think he's optimistic, but we'll see. It shakes out.
Close your, okay, that's your saying?
That's what the state is predicting at this time. Sorry, you don't want to hear it from Mike. Well, that's, it hasn't got to that point. That was supposed to happen today, so we'll see what happens. Go ahead, Chuck.
Tomorrow, they'll be working on Derrick Road. Mark Rec will be putting Derrick Road on 121 by the town line, right there by South Road, on the edge of that bank right there. So expect delays on 121. In the next week or two, we'll be finishing fixing road shoulders and patching the asphalt. I also, I put in paperwork. I sent it to ARPA for, I gave Jason the paperwork on a saw that goes on our tractor that is used to cut tree limbs and stuff like brushing the sides of the road. Right now, what we do is we hook somebody into the bucket of the boulder with a pole saw and drive down the road. Been doing it that way for years, it's not a good way to do it. This is a lot safer, and...
It just shred, you see, that's where you see the kind of shred.
No, this won't do that. Our mower now makes a mess.
Right.
This will just cut it right off clean like you did it with the chainsaw. Did you happen to see when the helicopter was cutting the railroad? This does the same thing, only hooked to our tractor. So we attach a quick cover, and we could take our brush hog off, mow the road sides, take the brush hog off, put this saw on there, and that will, one guy can go down and trim the road sides versus having a guy in a boulder bucket, and a guy driving, and a guy on the ground picking up brush. This should make things a lot more efficient and obviously safer. What else? The fuel tanks arrived today. I've got ahold of the state fire marshal. He's got to come and inspect, and we've got to go over with him where we can put them. The relation backs. That's, oh, and I was able to get into the order. Took a little bit, but we figured that out. So so far, we've been paid a total of $868,397.28 for the emergency work that's been done. And that was 10, 10 projects. Two are still, one is pending EHP review, which is the feds, and one is this one up here on the corner. So that's where we are today. And those two projects, one's $15,520.95, and the one up here on the corner is $79,560. We'll be waiting, and so it's done.
Anybody else, excuse me, have any other questions for Chuck at this time?
I'd just like to say, and he knows it, they graded West Row, they needed incredible jobs, best job I've ever seen. I went through Dummersden, they were grading it. It was like night and day. Yeah, they're really good job.
Do you need any specifics from Chuck before we...
The saw that goes on the tractor, have we bought that saw? We have that saw?
No, we have a proposal.
We have a proposal for a saw?
And he has submitted it to ARPA, waiting for...
Sorry, I was talking to...
On the works.
Submitted to ARPA. Okay.
All right. Thanks, Chuck. All right. Y'all set?
I'm doing sure good.
Kelly's safe?
I will do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Back to unfinished business. Current open appointments. Discuss advertising. We have... I guess I, yeah, I guess I wanted that on there, because I know we were still in limbo with a health officer. And actually, this is the first time I've seen this paperwork in our packet, that we actually have to appoint a health officer by a certain date.
9:30.
I didn't know that.
Expires, 9:30 issue.
I think we need to advertise for that to some degree, whether it's on our page, on the Gazette, what is our paper of record, the shopper. So you have the advertising, the description of the job?
The only thing that I, Kelly and I found was actually in what the state said. They have to be knowledgeable in rent, mold. You guys have it printed. Rent, mold.
Rental, rental housing?
Rental, rental housing, mold situations.
Mold, water septic?
Yes.
And other public health issues?
Yes.
Pretty broad.
That's pretty broad.
Yeah.
I guess that would be part of the question. The other question, when somebody fills in the add, it'll be that, what do we paint? What do we, how many hours, they think? It's always been a part of somebody else's job here. You know, town manager's out for a while before it. Ruth was doing it as a health worker, but she, there were full-time people here doing it as part of the job. Remember, since I've been here, actually having a specific person do all of that. See what I'm saying?
I do see what you're saying, and I understand. Yes, as long as I was here, it was always Russ.
Yeah. Always been a part of another job.
I feel like it's hard enough to get volunteers, excuse me, to do things. And I don't know if a stipend of some kind would be advantageous to have, to try to attract somebody that will do it. I don't, I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas.
I'm thinking, I don't have an opinion. All I know is it's always been part of somebody working here, getting calls, they have to go out, but really be, they're full-time, do, which is part of their job.
Right.
I don't know how, because we don't have any idea. They don't come in unless there's a problem. It isn't like you're going to work in, like a lister works every Tuesday or Wednesday.
Right.
We sat here since April. I've had one call. One call, and I just talked to the state and said, we don't have a health officer. Basically, they said, well, do you really want to get involved in this? And I'd let it go. That is okay.
Yeah. All the serious ones like the slaughterhouse having USDA inspector, we did have, we did have problems there. Remember, on it? We had problems with some homes, the septic system leaching into another person's jive. But nothing that I know of that was then like, honestly, we got to do something about it.
Well, we have till the end of September to figure it out to appoint somebody.
Well...
Which isn't very long, really.
It's official name, you're just basically the same. Ally, now the official alchemist.
Well, I'm just going to say that if you wanted to put my name down, because you're still going to be continuing to look for your candidate, what have you, I'm, just so you're in compliance with the state, I'm willing to do that.
Thank you, Ally.
You know what, Ally, that's a great idea, that maybe then you could find somebody that actually could go do it. We'd have the title. So we'd have somebody in the office that had a title button. Somebody calls up and says, hey, you got to be sure you have somebody that's qualified to call and say, did you go check this out?
Yeah, I'll, and yeah, I've got a lot of people that are willing to help, and have stepped up. So that's why, so you're in compliance, I'll take it, until you fill your...
Thank you very much.
Do we want to advertise for this?
No.
I mean, I think, yeah.
Currently advertising, when we don't know what we're paying and how many hours and what they're doing.
Well, it's currently an unmade thing.
Yes, it is, but you'd combine it with what you're...
Right, exactly, that's the problem. So, I mean, you could advertise it, and then just make it a discussion with whoever is interested.
I wouldn't have an idea to see who's interested in doing it, and then try to sit down and say...
Seven months, it's been coming home for years.
It's pretty minimal, I guess. Do you need a motion to...
No, we did actually, remember Russ had to go out for twice with problems?
Yeah. Which, that's a, who knows how many that could be?
Right, no, but I was just saying, yeah, it has, normally, by the time you're involved, you're really calling in other people to help you out, like here.
Right.
I think we need a motion.
I think so, too. I think we need a motion to appoint her, so we'll send the records. So I'll make a motion, and add a bid to...
Do you want to use the term interim health officer?
You pointed to interim health officer for town.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve, to appoint Allison Bigwood as interim health officer today as second.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hold up in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Supposed? I just had it. Do we need a motion to advertise, or can we just advertise?
You can advertise, you use, as long as you don't make, we're not doing anything.
Right, okay.
Same old difference as we advertise.
All right, so I think we need to advertise to some degree. Find a description, just a basic job description, position description, see what you come up with.
I know, there's some on...
We looked really quickly today, and it was just easier to go with what they, the state put on there, because of the other stuff that we were trying to find out for you today.
And we could change the title. As long as she has it, we could actually advertise for assistant health manager, that would actually work and be the one that goes, looks at the locations for her. So if somebody came and said, I'm not qualified, but how about helping Ally out doing it?
Right.
It might work.
All right.
Why don't we give it up to her? So me?
Go ahead.
Advertise, where are you going to advertise?
We're going to advertise on our... On our website, and our...
Gazette?
Gazette, the paper of record, I think, which is the shopper. And I don't know, I guess you could put it on the state website.
Is that just for the health officer?
Currently, yep. I don't have the list of the minutes in front of me, so I don't know how many other things were on that list that were on, on bill. I think that was the big one that was...
Yeah.
I think that was it. That was it.
Time sensitive, so to speak. Okay. Anything else on current open appointments? Seeing none, we'll go on to financial position discussion. We've kicked this around several different times. Do we want to advertise for that? Or do we want to talk to folks at town hall and see exactly what we need?
First, will it be just my personal thing, or we should meet with the staff?
We can table this for now.
Right. Because it might be a strong financial, or it could be a small one, according to how it balances out, what we're looking for and what we have to need.
Yeah, okay, so let's, let's table that now. Be...
Can I just mention something? Because you said the meeting with the staff. They just wanted me to put that on you folks' table, about when is going to be a good time for you to meet with everybody? The whole town hall. We're going to put it up to you. You tell us when. We're just asking, it would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so Patty doesn't have to come in where she doesn't drive, kind of thing. So we're going to put that on you. You call the date, we'll make sure everyone's in. How's that?
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on to Windmill Hill, Windmill Hill South Trail Discussion, Legal Opinion. In your packet, we have the legal opinion from our attorney, Ray Slayson. Did everybody get amplified or that over? I know John, I know John Todd did. I don't know if Todd Eastman was in favor of this gate situation or not. I don't remember at the time, but... I'm, my interpretation of this is the select board is, is kind of open as far as what they can and can't do. A gate can't be locked, according to this. I don't know how much more discussion on this we want to have. I think on a gate situation is who's going to put them in, who's going to maintain, who's going to pay for them.
Right.
Which I don't think any of it is large dollar amounts, but it's still got to be paid for somewhere.
We could put up barriers aside from gates, if you just limit four-wheel vehicles.
Well, I was wondering about, say, two large boulders on each end that you can get by with a horse, you can walk around, you can ride your bike around, but a vehicle's not going to... Or if there's a need for any of it, honestly. I, you know, I think a year from now, you're probably going to see that brush grow right back in there.
I think our main concern really was that if it became drivable from both ends.
Right.
It would change the character of the area, and there would need to be a fairly serious impact study for what that means to the residents and the maintenance cost of the road, town.
Well, it's not a road.
Exactly.
It's a trail.
But if it became drivable.
Yep.
And that's what we're trying to avoid, is that it would not be four-wheel accessible.
Yep.
Motorcycles, you know, people are going to go through once in a while, but mainly, it's the idea of it being accessible for people. But I know we're trying to avoid that. And then we have some issues with the maintenance of these structures that are, have been put in now. Do we have a maintenance agreement for those to be taken care of?
Structure, the culvert. Did we not pull the culvert out?
No, because I'm not, I'm, we'll hold another section I do next year, and I'm going to want to wrap.
Okay. So... Yeah, I think I was under the impression you were done.
No, it's done for this year. And there wasn't one of them sold. That was surprising, to be honest with you. We were hoping to get them, we're just not going to get them.
Okay. Culvert's on a trail, the town doesn't have any responsibility with the culvert's on a trail, but we didn't put the culvert in, so I'm not sure how that laid out.
The culvert was just replaced, and now it was there, it was right. From what I've read, the town has no responsibility or legal issues on a trail. Never going to, you know, you turn your hands up, it's a public right of way, but you have no responsibility. I think with a class four road, there's a minor responsibility. I'm not quite sure what that is. But I know on a trail, you don't have a responsibility. It's supposed to be a public right of way.
You don't have a responsibility to take care of it. We have responsibility for letting landowners go and do what they want with that. Correct? That's what, that's what the discussion is. What's stopping the next Johnny down the road? So I want to actually dig it out, put a water fire across it, or whatever. Town does control what you can do.
Yes.
And you're saying you're going to be there for two more years? I really think you should come in and ask permission.
Well, I, yeah, I will, when I'm ready to go, I'll come in and ask, so.
If we're not, the town could actually say to you, oh, hell, put, take the culvert out, when you're ready, you can come back, and we'll give you permission to put it back in. We do have that right. Yeah.
But we've established that this is a legal trail. Technically, legal trail three, whatever it's been on the maps since 2015, has a mileage listed on the Vermont Transit Maps.
Bruton's that one.
Yeah.
The only problem with boulders, if the fire department had to apply the fire, then they can't get around it.
I don't think you, I'm not going to speak for Cole, but I don't think you'd see them go down there with anything but their off-road vehicle, regardless of what's going on in there. Personally, but I kind of don't want to speak for them, but...
If Cole came back and said, I can live with two boulders there, I'm kind of like, it's huge, why put a gate?
Well, if, if a year from now, Dan needed to do another cut, he can kick those boulders out of the way, do his thing, kick them back in, everybody's happy. And the other thing with a gate is, I don't know about boulders either, but it sets a precedent when there's other legal trails around that don't have any issues going on. And now you got to, you know, well, you gated theirs, well, you might as well get this one, too. And then before you know it, we got 50 gate towns down that we got to maintain, and they're going to get damaged, something's going to happen, and they just turn into a a maintenance and a cost, you know? Whereas we can get four boulders for next to nothing, and then, oh, I'm in there. But I'm not, what did Dan eat or...
One of, one of the points I'll make is that we have trail camera up there, we have three now, in the months since we put them up. This is Alex, she's my partner, part owner of our business. It's his camera that comes on his phone, I think, since the last meeting, one motorcycle's been through. No four-wheelers, no trucks, no cars. It's not getting used, so...
You're not here. We've just had five people come through today. We've had traffic on that with motorized vehicles, whether you're seeing it in your camera or not.
Our cameras are very accurate, there's three of them, and they all, they're picking everything. It's just not happening.
Interesting. What's the board's pleasure at this point?
I, just my personal opinion, you should write a letter to us, say we must permission to put that culvert in in the next two or three years, and get all approved or signed off on, so that someone else doesn't complain about. Otherwise, we're letting anybody do what they want to do to that trail. There's nothing stopping him from digging a big ditch across there and saying, hey, don't worry about it, it's not costing town anything. And then now we're in a battle between the two of them. As long as he comes to us and says, okay, and we gave permission, he's better off, and he's better off.
From what I read in the statutes, it says, you have to ask the permission to do it, and you're supposed to leave it in the same condition or better than the...
We thought we were getting it all done, we all did. Now you're saying you're going to be there for another two, two years.
Well, yeah, I'm there, I've been there for 85 years. It's, it's a constant thing, every once in a while, we have to come out, we do a logging.
I think you got to come back to us.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that. That's not a problem, I was planning to do it anyway. Each time I come out, I'll, but you know, we're doing another cut.
The only other option is to do it, and take it out, and then come back in one or two years, and I can go back in. But that seems silly, it's slightly, Jason.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you're, you're doing more environmental impact by ripping it out and putting it in every time, than just leaving it in there.
Correct.
Don't make any sense to them.
Yep.
It's more the fact we set a precedent that he came, he asked, we gave him permission, and he's protected, and so on and on. But minute he doesn't get it anywhere else, well, he didn't get permission, so now I can go off and do something without permission.
Wasn't that the first part of your application, man?
Yeah.
It's on, it's on, I think...
We were on assuming it was a one-year thing. I, we were on assuming it was a one-year thing.
But the, I think if you're talking about the culvert was the first part of this, what he wanted to do in the.
Yeah, I don't think I gave any timeline. I just said this is what I'm going to do it so I can move stuff this.
I guess we were on, yeah, this was a one-year and it's done. At least, I could be wrong.
We were hoping to get it done in one year and we're just not going to, it's not going to happen.
Fine, just come back to us here. That's just my. Come back to us, say it's two years.
Yeah. Or should I just come back like next year when I know I'm coming within a month, say, hey, we're not going to get it, you know, we might. Every year changes when you're farming and things crop up and you don't get, you know, you have to change plans, so. You know, I'm happy to come in like a month or two before and say, yeah, we've got this on the agenda this year.
I think you'd, I think you'd come in a month or two before, reasonable amount before with it written.
Yeah.
So you did it the first time, approve it or not, or whatever, and when you're done, say, I'm done. I, I, I'm hesitant with blocking things off because it just sets a precedent. Just my opinion, but.
You have to basically set a precedent that it's reasonable to do this. I mean, most places you'd go, if it was a class four, you'd go to the town, get permission to drag your logs out and not run the road up and not do all that. As long as we got something on the right and you're knowledgeable, you've got a plan, I just couldn't go along with that. It's got to be a date. You can't be safe with the name of the site.
We do want to know what the situation would be with the two temporary culvert, I forgot about, water bar has been spelled on the south end of the road. And will those be brought up to some type of standard to hold up the nature storms?
I have not seen, I, since I did the site visit, I have not been out here, but. Are they different than what?
No, they're, they seem to be working right now. I mean, you'd go really big, boy, you'd have to go down there, these weapons towards the bottom.
But with those being there, there should be some type of maintenance agreement with the person putting them.
Well, on the same token, there's two water bars below that that nobody came to us about putting them in and they were put in.
There were any water bars.
But even still, they were put in, so.
There were no water bars before I go there. There was no.
No, no, I meant farther south.
Yeah, those were put in, but the ones I put in, there was nothing there. It's just eroding. That's why that ledge appeared. It's eroded over the last ten, twelve years. I used to drive my Houdie. Everyone drove through there. They're like, we just drove our cars and, you know, that was a good trail and then it just eroded out. There's no maintaining it. So I, you know, all of a sudden I did a little maintenance, now I have to keep doing it. I don't understand that. There was nothing. At least there's something now. And I don't mind doing it. We'll probably do it just to keep it open for us. If you really want to do it right, we have to go down there and do it right. I don't mind doing it. We got to ask for it. Someone, Chuck or Jason, you come in and say, listen, this is what we want, you know, this is the specs. We're putting the nice water bar.
The problem is, is if I tell you the water bar that I want to see there, you're going to come back to me and go, I can't get across it on my bike. Because I want big water bars. Do you follow me? We've got to find a, we've got to find a happy medium where this is going to work, it's going to last. You can put a board across it to get across it on your bike, whatever.
The water bar should. Keep vehicular traffic.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, that's why I asked that, just put a big water bar. Keep it down. The water bar I put in is precipitous. I don't think you can get up there and anything. You need a pretty good four-wheel drive vehicle, but you could get it down.
I'll.
Getting up.
When Chuck gets back, I'll go out with him. He wants to put an eyeball on it and, I mean, you're, I can say you're right there, but you can get in with it.
As a, as a lineage rail, it has a function for recreation. It obviously serves a function for ban for access to property. But we don't want to lose track that it's a recreational benefit to that part of the town, the town. And it has been for quite a few years. It's been used in different ways over time. It's been shortened, but. It should be recognized that the values of that area are stated, intrinsic value of the area. Should be recognized and the town can shape the use of that trail. We can't do it with a class four road, but we can do that with a trail.
Speaking for myself, I see no reason to change the usage or anything like that. I don't want to see it washed out any further. If it needs a bigger water bar, we'll put a bigger water bar. But I'm just afraid what's going to happen is people are going to come back and they're going to be upset that the water bar's too big. You know what I mean? We can't add it both ways. We got to just, we'll go out and chuck it back and we'll look at it and we'll figure it out. Everybody outside of that?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on, Hartley Hill update. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Hartley Hill Trail, Hartley Hill Road update. It's not in your packet, but I did, I just barely got back to the meeting, Fletcher. The only update is he is on his third surveyor right now to do the surveying work and he's still working on it, so there's really nothing else to. Go over. I just didn't want to lose sight of it, but that's, so that's where we're at. New business, seven twenty-nine. We've pretty much covered that. On A, unless there's any discussion on that. C, none. Are you good, Millie? Am I going too fast?
No, no, you're fine.
Okay. B, health officer position. We've basically covered that. Unless there's any other discussion. Errors and omissions. This is my first time dealing with that, so if you want to walk me through it.
This is something that the listeners do. So what happened is on, if you look at parcel number zero zero two zero one eight three ten. They had just bought this property and the veteran's exemption followed them for a forty thousand dollar reduction in their assessment. Okay, so they went from two ten to two hundred and fifty thousand, okay, so.
It's just an adjustment up there.
It's just an adjustment on their appraisal, yep. And then if you, the other one on parcel number zero zero six zero seven seven. T zero one, so the T will always tell you it's a trailer, okay, when it's on their parcel. They kept a separate parcel name in Leanne Richard, so the transfer, so basically. When she bought the mobile home, they didn't put the mobile home with the land. So now that is, now that is placed on her capital. Makes sense? It just did the land, they didn't do the trailer.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Where is West Park Drive? Where's that road?
West Park Drive, I don't know.
I've never heard of it before. Just Jerry Sammy, that's mine.
West Park Drive, I don't know.
I think that might be part of the virtual heights development.
Oh, no worries.
It goes around and then it goes up to the private part of the jury, right?
No, 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 I'm talking about the trailer park. Trailer park, that way down at the other end near Basins. Oh, maybe. That's Shady Pine. We have Shady Pine.
Yeah, that's shady.
I'm sorry for interrupting you.
You're fine. But then, so basically.
That on the west road is right there by.
I thought it was out west.
Right Hartley Hill.
Myself.
West Park Road, right? That's the only trailer park we have is, is there, that's all.
Hartley Hill, so then you got to go through. Scott Goddard and all that, you mean?
No. That was the west road, but from the Hartley, from the Saxons River end, those, there's a few trailers right there.
So, okay, so it's just a comment, now the, now the mobile home is on the property.
Yes.
So the value changes.
Yes.
We do them all the time. Honestly, we've had some where we just, on year, it's always this time to come back to sort of figure your taxes, realize something's wrong and. But we, do you need a motion?
Yes. You just need a motion for the minutes and then I'm going to write past and I'm going to have you initially. It'll go in their files.
Okay, but no, you need that unit number in the motion.
Yep. So you got to read your first parcel, like you're going to.
Parceling. You want them done separately? You want me to just do them all together, collect them?
You can do them, you can do them both together, yes, just going to read the parcels.
Actually, there's four. I have four here, or is it two?
You have two.
Yeah, you're good, go ahead.
You have two.
I think Kevin, one is where it was and the other one is where it is now.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you need the, do you need them collated or just, I just need the final correction? Is that all I need to do?
You just go to accept the error of omission report from the listeners for parcel such and such? Yep.
Okay, you realize that there are three parcels with these two pieces of paper, that's the question.
I also, yeah, I also see one for David L. Morse and Susan P. Morse along with Benjamin Whittingham and like, I do see it. You are right.
I've got Leanne Richard, Whittington, Morse and Rosen Pritchard.
Yeah, I didn't see, I don't have that.
There's two on each.
Am I standing correct?
Yeah, I thought, I thought they were.
Oh.
Correct?
No, yeah, you're.
You just read the top part, guys. We're ignoring the bottom part? Yeah, that's where they bought it from.
So I'm just going with Liza Whittington and the Morse property.
You go on the top.
These two.
These two.
Right here.
That's correct, that one. And no, this one, the top, the top folks.
And this.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
You get that?
I did not.
All right.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to do it.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion. On this date, August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, submitted, big title thirty-two, taxation and finance, got to twenty-nine.
Yes. David Morse and Susan Morse. This four.
That's what I, that's what I'm under. I see, I see four corrections here.
I apologize, I apologize. Nope. Yep, you're right.
So I submit all four under the E and O, please.
Yep.
Okay. Got the first parts?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, 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 yep.
Subchapter zero zero six thirty-two, Vermont statute annotated four two six one. Correction, omissions and errors from the grand list as follows for the following four parcels. First parcel, zero zero six zero seven seven point T O one, owned by Leanne Richard, forty, West Park Drive. Parcel number two. Zero zero six zero seven seven. Alexander N. Margulies and Leah Rosen Pritchard, twenty-six, West Park Drive.
That's right. You good?
Parcel three. Zero zero two zero one eight three one zero. Benjamin C. Whittington and Liza L. Whittington at three five nine Minard Road. Parcel four. Zero zero seven zero five eight zero zero zero. Owners, David L. Morse and Susan P. Morse, located at three O nine Fairbrother Lane. All four errors and omissions are submitted with the annotated correction as listed on the submission.
Motion's been made, second. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Both. Liza, pass. Can we send that right now?
Initially.
For initially. Yeah. Anything else on errors and omissions? Moving on, town manager's report.
I don't have a whole lot, as usual, but Kelly and I are going to start to work on the budget within the next coming weeks. We will ask the individual department heads to submit their needs and wants at that time. And so we can move forward with. All of this, because I believe in your September, you start in September with looking at the budget, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, and then. Four emails later, I finally have the audit set. It's for Friday, September sixteenth. We are, we have received our to-do list for the Fire District and for ourselves, for a small audit. They're always supposed to be here one day. We have forty-three things to do for them. But I have given the Fire District and the Prudential Committee the heads up and they'll, they'll get their laundry list of things to do for tomorrow. And if I could get the minutes from you, Kelly wants them from you tonight, and that was it.
Thank you.
Not a whole lot, but it's, we're getting, we're plugging away, right?
Yep, great. I think moving forward on the, on the budget part of things, at least my short time here, I don't think as a board, we spent. Nearly the time on the budget that we need to. As far as things that need to be changed, things that need, things that need to be, money's added to, you know, as we all know, everything has gone up ridiculously and. We're going to need, we're going to keep the same level of service. I'm more leaning, I'm more leaning towards like highway type things, but I'm assuming this building as well. You know, chloride, salt, asphalt, all that stuff is more commensurate.
Electric heat.
Yeah, I think we just need to look a little closer or a lot closer in some things and just. Try to be more accurate of what we need.
It's been too easy to just keep taking the last year's report and go, okay, we'll just change the date and then realize, nobody went back and realized we need to use close to that amount.
You could have gotten way a lot too much. You could get away with that two or three years ago. I don't think you're going to get away with that now. This stuff is all over the place, so. Just my two cents.
Along with you, I think we need.
Pretty minimal, I think. So we also. Sorry, hold on a minute. Can we do fuel bids under other business?
Yes.
Yeah, well, it's not on the agenda, so let's, it's under executive session, which we're not going to do that under executive session, so we'll do it under other business. So we do have an executive session, oh, sorry, is there anything else from the town manager's report?
I just had those couple of things. I apologize. I thought you guys did that in the executive session, so that's on me.
No, no worries.
No worries. You can discuss it, you just can't open it up and repeat it and then, or you can actually, if it's a bid, it has to be opened and done.
So moving on, we, we moved Chuck up ahead, so we do have an executive session, should be fairly quick for personnel matter.
Motion to move in an executive session for personnel matter.
All set. Motion's been made, second, to move, move into executive session for personnel matter. All those in favor?
Aye. Tonight.
We will do that after other business.
Should I stop there, or?
Nope, we're good right now. Force committees and commissions. Don't believe we have anything. So we'll move on to other business. Is there any other business other than fuel bids at this time, anybody? So the fuel bids came back. I should read these aloud for the record. Let's see, for the minutes.
I apologize for my ignorance, I don't know.
No, no worries. We got one. We got five bids back. And they are as follows. This one's a little confusing, but Coda and Coda for heating fuel. Four dollars and forty-nine cents per gallon. Plus fifty cents for a total of four ninety-nine per gallon. I'm not sure what the fifty cents is, but.
If we buy their protection plan.
Oh, for equipment?
Nope. Stop. If you buy their protection plan, in other words, if the fuel goes down.
Oh, I got you, good.
We, we pay the fifty cents extra upfront?
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay. Propane, two dollars and eighty-nine cents a gallon. Off-road diesel, four fifty. This says price floats, so that must be.
They're not going to guarantee that price.
Okay. Next down the line is Dead River. Heating fuel, three ninety-four nine.
Three ninety-four nine, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, three ninety-four nine, and that price is good until eight twenty-three.
Yep, because they are claiming that, that price changes daily and they couldn't give us a set price.
Okay. Propane, a dollar sixty-nine nine. And that price is good until eight twenty-six. And the off-road diesel fuel, four dollars and nine cents a gallon. That does not list any timeframe. Discount oil. Heating fuel, three dollars eighty-two cent, eighty-two nine. Three point eight two nine. Propane.
Are these still on Dead River?
No, we're on discount oil.
Oh, discount oil, okay, I'm sorry. That's the name of the company, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
The wrong, propane, dollar seventy-three nine. And off-road diesel, four thirty-five nine.
Four thirty-five nine.
Yep, and the note is good for a few hours.
Yep.
Received eight twenty-two, twenty-two.
No lie, no lie.
I don't doubt, no, I don't doubt it. I just, I just got to chuckle.
Will I, really?
I'll, when you get all done, I'll explain the law.
Bart Energy. Heating, heating fuel, four dollars seventeen cents. No price on the propane. Bart doesn't do propane or they don't, they don't bid it?
They, they don't do propane. They deliver propane to my house.
They do.
They don't, they don't.
They must have not wanted to.
They don't want, they, at this time, they don't wanna do the propane.
Okay. Uh, off-road diesel, four dollars twenty-two cents.
What's that?
Allen Brothers. Heating fuel, four dollars ten cents. Uh, propane, uh, no bid on the propane. And off-road diesel, four dollars thirty-four nine.
Four thirty-four nine.
Yep, no, no notes on either of the last. So. Let's hope he's out.
I obviously gotta include me, so, but I will. My brother sent me an email tonight. So, so the big complaint we have, I was just looking at real quick, was they always ask for way too much fuel and don't use it. And it leaves a bad case because once you bought it. So I was looking at even Dead River, there's no amount of fuel. So if, if we ask for twenty-five thousand gallons, then you gotta use the twenty-five thousand gallons.
The only difference, I can tell you this, that Jason sent me an email and said, whoa, can you retract? Please, can do, do it after your account. There was only a three thousand gallon, three thousand gallon difference between our heating fuel. The rest of it was mostly spot on.
Well, I'm just gonna say, Dead River, for example, didn't put any gallons. So it's how many gallons are you committing to and you gotta, and you have to take that.
Right.
So on.
Okay, so I don't know why they did the bid that way, but I can tell you that Jason, Jason felt the same way. Uh, he's, you know, to retract the first letter that I sent out, I just did a.
No, I'm not criticizing you.
No, 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 I don't feel that way. I don't feel that way, but they're, they're, the difference was minimal.
In, in the oil business is gone nuts right now. They've gotten to a point, so you have, the way the state of Vermont does.
Bottom line is, do we need, do we have a firm bid from any one of these guys that covers how much oil we're gonna get? Total amount. And a buy-in for five thousand, ten thousand gallons, what's the price? And then what is our off-road and our solution for propane? That's the bottom line. That's what we're here to vote on.
I had a, well, I had to throw this into the mix too, because I don't know enough about fuel.
It's okay, I'm just.
We have, we have above ground tanks now at the garage. Is that right?
We will.
And that, that's gonna make a difference, isn't it?
It's gonna mean more, it's gonna mean more deliveries. Versus, which, to be honest with you, we got, you know, we got ten thousand in the ground right now. We're not getting ten thousand gallon deliveries. We're not getting five thousand gallon. We're probably getting twenty-five hundred-ish, you know.
Per time.
Right, but the, the bid securing should secure ten thousand gallons for the season at a price.
The very first bid I sent out said exactly the amount of gallons.
Yeah.
Each, each destination in town needed. So the.
Institute.
Institute's gonna need at one drop, five hundred gallons.
Right.
To max out five thousand gallons for the season. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
But if, the whole argument, if at the end of the year, you only use three thousand, what's the oil company doing with the other two thousand? See what I'm saying? And in the first way you did it, there was no exclusion. They were, so most of the places always say, you have to take at least ninety percent of what you said you're gonna do.
Yep.
Because we went and bought the fuel. And that's not what we've been doing in the past. We've been coming back with, asking for a lot more than they ever used. And at four o'clock, the rack goes off and that's it. So that's why, a lot of places, that's why you kept saying it's no good for about two hours. You almost gotta say, four o'clock today, at five o'clock tonight, you tell us what it is and they'll give you a high price. Because first thing in the morning, they gotta go buy that fuel.
So we have a hard price?
I.
Yeah, so, so my brother sent me an email tonight to say, hey, listen, the rack at four o'clock went up twenty-seven cents, so I don't think I could, I think I'd decline my bid. Because it just went up twenty-seven cents.
And that's on the rec, that's on the, you want that on the record that he's gonna pull his bid?
He's trying to be upfront. He said, hey.
Well, I don't know, I appreciate that, buddy.
He goes, you, you, you can't let me go that long because it goes up and down, you know?
But they, they gotta know we're not talking about it that day. I mean, I'm not trying to be.
No, it has to be that way.
I understand, you know, when I, in what I, in hindsight, you folks, I should've called, I should, we should've called a meeting for Monday noon. But I put the bid.
And accept.
That's right.
Okay. That's what, that's exactly, yes, exactly what it is, is like, you gotta build to do with at least twelve, you know, twelve to twenty-four hours from what it is. Otherwise, it's going up and down so much.
I didn't know that. I know.
Volatile, very volatile.
Exactly what they're saying.
So to answer Kevin's question. Coda's has uh, committed gallons. Dead River does not have any gallons listed. Allen Brothers, are you, we're calling that out then?
I, I didn't see his bid. I'm not involved, so whatever.
But you just stated for the record that.
I just stated, he said, read that. Uh, you're, I thought you were asking me what, how many gallons. I don't, I don't know.
Uh, Allen Brothers does have committed gallons, twenty-five thousand off-road, ninety-five hundred heating oil. Uh, they all do, except for Dead River does not have any committed gallons, which as far as, I would interpret that as. Then you're gonna hold that price no matter if we buy five gallons or we buy fifty thousand. So. It's only, it's, yeah.
But we uh, we even know if Coda's, Coda's number is valid?
He said he's sticking with it.
So is that really the only bona fide?
Not that, not that that matters that he's right.
No, no, I was thinking.
Strike that, please, but.
Is that the only bona fide?
He, he said, this is, this is it. This is where he's going with it, or when he dropped off his bid. He was the first to drop off his bid on this fifteen.
So you're buying price protection?
No. If we can buy the price.
You can.
We can for fifty cents more a gallon, but we don't have to.
You, you don't have to. You can just, I just wanna understand, they, so you're just buying it for, for forty-nine?
Yeah, so if you just purchase it for four forty-nine, that's what you're gonna pay for the whole contract.
Yeah.
That's what he said.
So let me read you their bid.
Aye.
So they have number two, heating fuel, seven thousand gallons, capped option, plus fifty percent, fifty cent downside protection. Of four forty-nine plus downside protection.
And I do it?
Total would be, yes. Propane, fifteen hundred gallons of propane purchased at a fixed price of two eighty-nine. Fixed price. Off-road, twenty-five thousand gallons of off-road diesel purchased at market price. Price floats with, it quotes, uh, sorry, parentheses, price floats with market.
That's right.
In parentheses, as of today's price, four fifty per gallon.
Right.
All payments are net thirty, minimum delivery a hundred gallons. Your account will be set up on automatic status. Delivery timeframe would be September through May of twenty-three. Our hourly service call, the quoted, the quotes listed above are, are available until September first, twenty twenty-two. If any option, if any auction is of interest to you, please note. So this is, this is the way I'm looking at it. If, if Tim does not want this bid, does it change twenty-seven cents? We can, we can eliminate that. Bart does not have a propane price. We can eliminate Bart. This is just my simple mind, right? So we can eliminate Bart. So that leaves us uh, discount oil, Coda and Coda, and Dead River.
Dead River doesn't have any numbers, right?
Dead River does not have any gallons, any fixed gallons. It just says, please be, please be advised, thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to bid. Please be advised, due to extreme market volatility, the number two oil and off-road fuel prices are only good until eight twenty-three twenty-two at three P M.
So he's out.
Hey, I'm sure they've changed.
He's out, yeah, no, he's out.
Yeah.
So you have, so you have discount oil and.
Is discount firm, does he, does he have any qualifications on his bid?
Discount, three eighty-nine, three eighty-two nine.
Yeah, and so discount oil has, good morning, discount oil, L and G propane, our beliefs offer you a fixed price for twenty-two, twenty-three season. Twenty-two thousand gallons of off-road at four thirty-five nine, seven thousand gallons. Of number two heating oil at three eighty-two nine, fifteen hundred gallons of, uh, of propane at a dollar seventy-three nine. The, these prices are contingent on being awarded the entire bid. So they want all three products. Prices are, are subject to change. Uh, and discount oil, their note was good for a few hours, received eight twenty-two. So that number has changed significantly since this bid. Oh, yes. That leaves us Coda and Coda, who is holding these numbers till September first, twenty twenty-two. The only difference is the off-road fuel is market price.
What do you think about that?
Everything else is more expensive.
And the nets.
What do you think about that?
I'll be perfectly honest with you, if we were taking ten thousand gallons out of whack, I wouldn't feel so bad about it, but now they're gonna be taking.
That's where all the big number is.
Yeah, through twenty-five hundred gallons out of whack. I think it's a three, I think it's a three thousand gallon.
Okay.
So it's gonna change every delivery.
Okay.
That's my only.
This is the off, just the off-road.
Right.
Correct. My simple mind also tells me Coda and Coda is a local company, discount oil is not a local.
I'll say that, Coda is a local.
Total, Coda and Coda is a local company, discount oil is not a local.
Well, on discount, their, their bid has changed.
Their bid is.
So really, we have one, we have really one firm bid.
Right.
If you want all three, that's it. You want all three products, and I don't think you're gonna find any of these others. They're gonna give you one product if they're not taking all three.
Right.
You know what I mean? Well, there's a couple of them, I have propane. Well.
Okay. What's the story?
That's a great question. I think, I think we're left with one option. If we go through it just like we just did.
Right, it could be one option or we have like a special meeting. Do it the day we receive the bid.
I hope I'm not sitting here next year, but if I am, we're doing this that day.
Yes.
That, that makes total sense. I wouldn't have thought of that either, but that does make, that does make sense with it being so.
Let me tell you something, it was, it was worse last year, so don't worry about it.
Oh, no, it is, it, it, it's getting a little better because like I said, yeah, I can hear complaints for like, boy, I mean, how many gallons did they actually gotta pay? They don't like this one, so. But it is.
It's gonna be a bad winter, so.
Don't say that.
It'll be cold, cold.
Well, I, I, that gives us one option.
So are we going down that road?
It will lock the price in, with one exception. The question is, do you really wanna lock it in?
Well, and then the question is, do you wanna pay the price protection thing?
We're not in this business, but.
The price protection thing is the thing.
Right, do you wanna do that?
But you didn't offer that to the others. You didn't ask for it. We should've asked for it.
I.
No, it's not criticizing you.
We didn't ask for it.
We didn't ask for it, period.
They offered, they, Coda's offered that.
I know, but if you had asked in the bid, would the other guys give you that protection? Yes, you could.
But not to be flippant, but either way, you're gonna have somebody somewhere along the line on the list that will, may or may not. Say we should've done something better because their armchair quarterbacking after the fact. Bottom line is, we have one firm bid remaining that has providence and is real.
Do you want me to read their bid again? Do you have the actual verbiage?
Yeah, wait.
Thank you for your recent inquiry regarding heating fuels for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three season. Please see our proposal below. Number two heating fuel, seven thousand gallons of number two heating fuel purchased at a capped option. Plus fifty percent downside protection of four forty-nine per gallon. Plus downside protection.
What's a capped option?
Uh, I'm reading their verbiage, I don't know. Total payment would be three thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eleven cents for nine months. Starting nine one twenty-two. Propane, fifteen hundred gallons of propane purchased at a fixed price of two eighty-nine per gallon. Off-road diesel, twenty-five thousand gallons of off-road diesel purchased at market price. Price floats with the market of today's price, four dollars and fifty cents per gallon. All payments in terms are net thirty, minimum delivery a hundred gallons. Your account will be set up on automatic status. The delivery timeframe would be September twenty twenty-two through May twenty twenty-three. Our hourly service rate, call rate for regular business hours is one ten an hour after that. These are time and a half. Quotes, the quotes listed above are, are available until September first, twenty twenty-two. If any option is of interest to you, please contact me and I will send out a contract. Warm regards, Casey Coda. The verbiage is a little, is a little confusing, but.
So, well, either way though, but you're getting, you're getting two lap prices, one on the distillate, the other on propane, and then you're getting a fluke on diesel. Assuming where the market takes us.
Which went up twenty-seven cents. We had twenty-seven cents.
But as you astutely pointed out, we are not oil traders here.
No.
Yeah.
It, it, but the biggest volume, it is that. That's the biggest volume.
Did, do we have automatic delivery before? I don't, I actually like the automatic delivery option for the highway garage, because it's one less thing Chuck has to do. And we're gonna get.
Well, he complained, this was his complaint, he's not here, so he had to fix it. Was that he has to put some additive in, in, in the head bucket last time. They would only bring like a thousand gallons at a time and he couldn't figure out how to mix it. He wanted them to fill the whole tank up because he had to run it longer, and they wouldn't do it. They wouldn't drop that much fuel off.
They don't put the additive in, so there's no danger. Didn't do that for farm too.
So, we've got, Mr. Chair, we've got a bona fide bid.
What's the board's pleasure?
No, that forty, that forty's not in. So you have to recuse it or have it.
If Tim wants to pull his bid, then that bid we have him.
We have one bid that, that, that we're voting on. That's the Coda bid.
Technically, did you say that when we're all done, that's only qualified?
Right.
It's still, with, with the bid, everything else that was submitted formally that we had before us are expired.
Those numbers are no good.
No.
The only thing is, is it's still not a fixed price because it goes up and down and it's the biggest volume.
I don't dispute that.
You know, I'm going like, why didn't we just go to bid for that? Whatever it is over the percentage of the rack, you can do that.
I'm, I'm all with you, but it's the same thing as saying on Monday morning, you know, why, why did we call a pass plan? We should've ran the ball.
I really, Coda's a good customer of mine, I really.
Right, they're great. I mean, they got all this stuff together. Yeah, they're more expensive, but.
Yeah, but only other thing is, is there's their setup fee or anything like that, but whatever. It lists no other fees of any kind. And to be honest with you, in the wintertime, they should be delivering winter fuel, blended fuel anyway. We shouldn't have to be adding anything.
No, no, it's not added like she thinks it is. It's some additive to be.
No, 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 that's exactly what it is, because I work there.
Really?
It's John Deere winter fuel additive. Couldn't tell you, because I've never put it in my truck. Anything I own unless it's super, super, super cold.
You have a problem with that?
Nope, I've never had anything deal up. No, I think it's the way it was always done.
Like, make a motion to accept the Coda and Coda contract for all three fuels for the town of Westminster for the year of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, as submitted.
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the bid as submitted from Coda and Coda Fuel for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three season. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? None? Craig, were you recusing yourself on that still, or?
Well, I guess if we're voting for Coda's. I guess if I had an argument that was against Coda, I would say no, but yeah, I would vote in the bid, so.
So he, you are voting or you aren't? I am sorry.
I voted yes.
Okay, so it's four zero.
So I think first thing in the morning, first thing to do is call and say, you got it?
Yep.
And.
That was a hard word he had for one year, you know, didn't call for three days, finally called Russ and said, who got his bill? He didn't, who is he? Didn't know I even had it.
Yeah, no.
It is real time sensitive. I don't blame him.
It's, it's what it is, so if, if we can lock two of the three, we're, we're two.
What did we do last?
So the only thing that being.
Allen Brothers.
But I don't know who did propane.
Well, I think they probably just didn't want it to.
We went HB, we stayed with HB. HB didn't do it this year, but they've always had our propane.
HB didn't even give us a bid this year.
Yeah, that's true. HB was propane and.
They've always been propane.
So depending on if we own that propane tank or not, it may swap them out.
That's what I was just gonna say. Will they, the, the question is, gotta ask Coda if there's gonna be a fee to install that propane tank.
Well, I thought, I talked to Cole about what we use propane for. I think it's just for the generators. So what do we need fifteen hundred gallons for?
I question that too. I, I couldn't tell you. I don't. I, I couldn't tell you, I don't.
That's what I questioned, that's what I kept saying, what are we using that for?
The generators, as far as I know, have, they test every Wednesday, but have never kicked on for more than an hour insofar as. That, you know, the power goes out, come back on.
I think that would be the only question is, if that's an HB tank, Coda will want, they'll just probably, I've done it before with them, they'll just swap that tank out. They'll send the guy down, they'll take that tank out, credit us the fuel, put another tank.
I, you know, I don't know, because when you sign a contract, your house is forever until you pay the fee to pull it back out. Because this is a bid, it's only a one-year contract, it's a asset. And I'm not so sure we did buy the tank. Sometimes we could've bought the tank.
There's no name on the tank.
Yeah, we might own that tank then.
That's the only question, other than that should be known.
I mean, I did check that out.
Thanks, Ellen.
And ask for a contact person for Chuck to be able to, when he needs, because we're gonna, we're gonna try to draw those tanks down as far as we can. Before we get the new one set.
If that's the additive, there's one more question, you better sound like you're something.
I've been better, one hundred percent positive, that's what it is. All right, uh, that's all we have, is there any other business at this time? Billy, do you need copies of anything for your notes for your, for your pay? At this time? Excuse me, will, and Derek, into executive session for personnel matter? There, there won't be any, uh, action taken, yes.